So, good evening and welcome to the October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two City Council Special Meeting. I am Mayor Ross and tonight's special meeting is brought to you live using video conferencing technology provided by Zoom. And tonight's recording will be posted on the city's YouTube channel. So, thank you for everyone for joining us tonight. Acting City Clerk Dana McCall, would you please call the role?
Yes, Councilmember Christensen, or excuse me, Councilmember Benson?
Here.
Councilmember Christensen?
Here.
Councilmember Holloway?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Lasse?
He said he would be joining us, so we will.
Councilmember Mayhew?
Here.
Councilmember Walton?
Here.
And Mayor Ross?
I am here. I guess in the interim, should we go ahead and excuse Councilmember Lasse?
So moved?
This is moved by Councilmember Christensen and second by Mayor Proton Mayhew to excuse Councilor the State. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed name? So, it passes and Councilor the State is excused. As a reminder, members must seek recognition from the chair before speaking and be sure to raise your hand. And now we move to the first item of business, which is to approve the agenda. Council may have a motion to approve the special meeting agenda.
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Mayor Proton Mayhew and second by Councilor Walton to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none or hearing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed name? It is unanimous and the special meeting agenda is approved. So, tonight we will continue deliberations of the combination of AB twenty-two dash zero nine eight, some coming mill planned commercial industrial plan and AB twenty-two dash one fourteen, some coming mill development agreement during this special workshop. Please note that because the city council consideration of the mill site plant PCI plan is a closed record proceeding, public comment on the mill site quasi judicial land use matter will not be accepted, nor are we taking public comment on the development agreement this evening. However, on Monday, the council will be deliberating during council meeting, October twenty-fourth, on both of these agenda bills, AB twenty-two dash one fourteen and AB twenty-two dash zero nine eight. There will be time for public comment regarding the development agreement, which is the AB twenty-two dash one fourteen. City Attorney Stirbank, would you please address the legal parameters pertaining to quasi judicial land use matters, including appearance of fairness doctrine?
Yes, I will. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. As we have before, all of these meetings related to the quasi judicial land use matter, I'll ask you a brief series of questions. And as in the past, these will be designed just to elicit information updating from the last time the council met on this, which I believe was last Tuesday evening. And so, since that time, the last council meeting, and I'll pause for a moment as Councilmember Lasse is joining us, so.
Here.
Please note, Councilor Lasse has joined us at six oh three. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And so, since the time of the council's last special meeting on these topics, has there been any change in your relationship or potential future relationship with either the or the project opponents, the Snoqualmie Community Action Network or other parties of record? Councilmember Benson?
No.
Councilmember Walton?
No.
Councilmember Holloway?
No.
Mayor Proton Mayhew?
No.
Councilmember Lasse?
Could you repeat that? I was just sitting down.
Certainly. The question is, since the last special council meeting on the, these two items, the quasi judicial land use matters, has there been any change in your relationship to or with either the applicant, Snoqualmie Mill Ventures or parties of record or project opponents, Snoqualmie Community Action Network?
No change.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Christensen?
No change.
And Councilmember Johnson?
No change.
Thank you. And since that time period, have you received or been party to any ex parte communications with any proponents or opponents of the project? Councilmember Benson?
None.
Councilmember Walton?
No.
Councilmember Holloway?
No.
Mayor Proton Mayhew?
No.
Councilmember Lasse?
Not with the proponents or opponents or other parties of the record, but other citizens. Is that this question? Are you going to ask that one also?
Are they, do they pertain to the matter?
Yes.
Yeah, that, can you disclose those?
Yes, one local resident asked me about whether the applicant was obtaining water rights for the development. I said, that's not something I can really talk about. Why don't you contact the city and, and ask them what that situation is? And then I had another citizen who asked me why, I'll put it in nicer language, why, why would you not approve this project? And I said, that's absolutely, I can't speak to you to that. And I turned and walked away.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Christensen?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
No.
All right, thank you. And is there any reason that you, I believe you cannot decide the matter fairly and impartially? Councilmember Benson?
No.
Councilmember Walton?
No.
Councilmember Holloway?
No.
Mayor Proton Mayhew?
No.
Councilmember Lasse?
No.
Councilmember Christensen?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
No.
All right, thank you, Mayor. That concludes my questions on the quasi judicial land use aspects of tonight's proceeding.
Great. Thank you, City Attorney, City Attorney Stirbank. So, Council, before we start deliberations, is there a desire to hold a closed session regarding the quasi judicial land use matter this evening? Mayor Proton Mayhew?
I move to go into closed session for a period of forty-five minutes.
It's moved by Mayor Proton Mayhew to go into closed session for about forty-five minutes. It was second by Councilor Walton. Any discussions? Seeing none, all is in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed name?
Aye.
Aye.
So, there is two names, Councilor Lasse and Councilor Holloway? So, it is passed. Council Johnson, what was your vote?
Aye.
Aye, okay. It was five to two. Okay, so we will go into closed session pursuant to RCW forty-two dot three zero dot one four zero two regarding quasi judicial matter between named parties distinguished from a matter having general effect on the public or on a class or group. So, City Attorney Stirbank? Who should attend?
Council yourself, City Administrator, Mr. Rogers, Ms. Artechi. And then just because there are members of the public present, would just ask the council whether they anticipate resuming an open session? Close session.
Mayor Proton Mayhew?
The basis of my forty-five minute motion was the assumption that we would come back then into open session.
Okay. Those assumptions. So, we will return then. We will not adjourn. We will return at six fifty-five.
Okay, very good.
Okay. So.
So, Mr. Betts, is there a separate link for
to join us? Get some fresh air if you can find it.
Right, so Councilmember Johnson, so a separate link is being emailed momentarily for the closed session.
Thank you.
So, we will log out and into the other link.
So, we should log out as well if we're logged in, is that correct?
Correct. We'll log out of this and log into the other.
All right, and it went to all council members? Or? Needs to go to Councilmember Johnson?
Probably all.
Or to all, or just some?
All customers.
Yeah, I'm going to just go ahead and remain on the line until I get the email.
Right. In Acting City Clerk Dana McCall, would you confirm after we are off? Because I think this, are we leaving this one on hold? That you cannot see or hear us, please?
Yes, I will confirm that. Thank you.
Bringing up, I want to paint that's the wrong color.
Don't you have teenagers?
Tried that for too long. Said, this doesn't look like the right color. No, no, it's just smoky and dark out. It's okay. It's just the sunshine.
I
Mayor, as of now, I can still hear you.
Okay. Okay, so we're gonna each log off and then the link has been sent. So, we're going to log into the new one. It is now seven forty-seven. We are back in open session. After we've been in closed sessions, we are back. I believe that there were some different deliberations that went on that we are wanting to maybe further talk about and maybe reasoning around it. And I think City Attorney Stirbank was going to put those on the screen.
Sorry, Mayor, that's going to take me just a moment here. Mr. Rogers is going to.
Why, just kidding. Joel looks happy. I'm going to stop being able to hear us. Well, none of this has been changed. That's just a Zoom happy face mask. He could have been a bunny. What are you going tomorrow morning to the seventy AM breakfast? My first meeting at Boeing is seven AM every morning. And they pay the mortgage.
Okay, you should have that. Now.
Mayor Proton Mayhew?
Yeah, maybe, just fellow councilmembers, if I can make some comments. For the upcoming council meeting on Monday, we have on the agenda consideration of the two agenda bills related to the what we call the Snoqualmie Mill Site, right? One is the PCI item, one is the proposed development agreement, which we're discussing tonight, the proposed development agreement. In anticipation that we might like to hear from the public, we have also put in a, under the public comment period, a specific call out that will be looking for public comments on this document, the proposed development agreement. And the city's communication department is publishing that in many different ways to try and make the public fully aware that we're interested in hearing their comments. So, not a public hearing, but just common, public comment period, and we're asking specifically that they would comment on this item. So, in advance of that, the idea is that we need to put a document in front of the public that they could then comment on. So, the idea is that tomorrow, a document will be circulated. Because this is our first open session discussing this, I'll just summarize that there has been some back and forth with the developer regarding what would be in that proposed development agreement. And there was an original proposal. It's now been modified based on that back and forth. So, tonight, we've had some discussion in closed session about the latest draft. There's going to be a couple changes that we're going to make to that. And then the document with those, in essence, proposed changes to the developer will be what we publish, because we need to get something in the public. The developer hasn't seen those or had a chance to comment on them yet. So, obviously, between now and Monday, there will be time for the developer to consider those and give us comments either before or certainly at the meeting Monday. And also, we would hear from the public. So, I think Mr. Stirbank or City Attorney, I think, is going to summarize, am I correct, those two changes to the latest back and forth that we've had with the developer. Is that correct?
Sure, I can do that. And also, just to circle back to Mayor Proton, your comments about the public comment, just to clarify, you will be looking for people to give oral public comment at the meeting, either remotely or in person, as opposed to a written comment period?
Correct.
Okay.
All right. So, obviously, council members, if we have any different thoughts, tonight would be the time to say that, so that we could, you know, tune into that. But as it stands now, that's how the agenda for Monday is teed up. And that's the communication that will occur between now and then.
Sure. So, what Mr. Rogers is showing on the screen, and I just did a double take, because it shows up in a different color than I'm accustomed to seeing. But, but I will say, you know, that's the purple of Northwestern Wildcats, so go Cats. Thank you for that, Jason. Or Huskies, for, for those in state here.
Go Coops.
Go Ducks. Yeah. Anyway, what Mr. Rogers is showing is the language in section seven of the draft agreement related to affordable housing and as the mayor pro tem indicated, this is a part of the agreement about which we have had a fair amount of conversation with the applicant and applicants, legal and other representatives for the course time. And so, there are some most recent, there's a set of most recent changes shown here. Some of those reflect a recent proposal by the applicant, those, the shown in purple and the highlighted shown in yellow is the council's direction for where what we would put out in, in the draft tomorrow as the city's final proposal on this, which represents a commitment for twelve percent of the total units in each building at eighty percent area median income, King County area median income or AMI and ten percent of the total units at, at sixty percent. The, the other language that's highlighted here speaks to that the, the requirement for the sixty percent AMI is tied to the council's subsequent adoption of a residential targeted area and modifications to the multifamily tax, tax exemption program that exists in the current code in chapter three point ten of the Snoqualmie Municipal Code, that that would be enacted and effective by January one, two thousand and twenty-four for these twin requirements to be effective. And if there isn't such a proposal or a a program in place, then it would revert to the just fifteen percent of total units in each building at eighty percent AMI.
Mayor Proton Mayhew?
And City Attorney, would it be, would, would it be a correct summation that in the discussions back and forth with the applicant, this topic of affordable housing came up? The city council indicated a desire to have an affordable housing element. The applicant indicated that they also were interested in having an affordable housing element. What we're seeing here is the results of some back and forth that has to discussion, what would be the right? What would be an appropriate level? And then a discussion of this whole topic of multifamily tax exemption and how that might change the equation such that level could then make sense to, at a much higher level economically to the developer. And so, then this is just an attempt to zero in on what is a fair and equitable kind of outcome. But both the applicant and the council have been driving towards a concept of adding a significant, this is a very significant portion of affordable housing into the project. Is that a correct, accurate summation?
That, that is correct. And because I think as, as you, your comments imply, the initial proposal was in the PCI plan was workforce housing. There was not an affordability component. That was a strong interest of the council and council members brought that up early on and your open comments and that initiated this, the back and forth. And the, the language that says that if there's not a MFT program in place, going back to fifteen percent at eighty percent AMI, that was where the applicant had started in trying to address the council's comments. So, that's.
But, but to your point, follow up, okay?
Yeah, follow up. And then, Councilor Johnson?
And, and to your point, the initial proposal or the initial discussion didn't have this element. Even without that multifamily tax exemption, the developer has proposed a significant amount of affordable housing afforded me within this proposal. And then what both the council and the applicant are striving towards is a way to perhaps increase that with use of multifamily tax exemption, which is exactly what that program is designed to, to do, to allow us to, to even create more affordability into the program. So, this, as you pointed out in yellow, is a slightly different proposal or amount that this, that we're putting in this for public disclosure than what has been discussed so far, but it's relatively close. And so, we'll see the developer's response to that. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Councilor Johnson?
Thank you. I think the Mayor Protem is doing an excellent job, kind of narrowing in on a lot of this. As a very small thing, I think that there's an extra A at the end of the first line of the second paragraph, but it should be stricken.
Yes, there is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments regarding? Regarding this?
Yeah, sure.
What was the next item then? I believe it was the ladder truck.
Correct. And so, the, the next item is now shown on the screen, thanks to Mr. Rogers, section thirteen point six, which pertains to fire-related transportation mitigation or in a shorter term, a fire ladder truck. And going back to the EIS, the discussion in the EIS about potential impacts on city services indicated that there could be, because of the height deviation requested and the number of buildings that were proposed to be in excess of thirty-five feet, there could be a need for a fire ladder truck and that suitable mitigation for that should be identified. Was identified in a proposed condition of the PCI plan reflected in the hearing examiner's decision that there be a prorata share payment by the applicant towards the cost of the city's fire ladder truck, which is an included item in the CIP. And so, the language that's reflected here speaks to that requirement and identifies the prorata share at thirty-five percent of the total cost of the ladder truck. That being determined at the, either as the actual cost, if the city buys it before the, the building gets underway, or if the building gets underway first and it remains an item in the city CIP, the prorata share percentage thirty-five percent would be applied as against the, the cost identified into then applicable CIP. Some of the back and forth that occurred recently had to do with the timing of the payment. The, neither the EIS nor the PCI plan condition spoke to that level of detail. And so, the, the language that had been requested by the applicant would, would split the thirty-five percent in a way that twenty-five percent would be payable on the first building permit for the building that would be in excess of thirty-five feet. And the remainder would be deferred until a subsequent planning area. And the language that's shown here reflects our concurrence to, to allow some delay in payment of the full price to accommodate the project getting underway, but not delay it, not delay that ten percent all the way until a subsequent phase, but to tie it to the timing of the issuance of the certificate of occupancy, which really represents the completion of the first residential building and when there might be folks living in those units on the higher floors that could result in the need for the fire ladder truck to be called into service. Happy to take any questions. That's the, the edits, to the edits are shown in, in yellow, which is really the, the city's final proposed language that we would include in in the iteration of a document that we would plan to publish tomorrow.
Where's the word final? Final occupancy?
So, it's, it's a reference there in the second yellow highlighted.
Of occupancy.
Correct, right. On rare occasion, there are various gradations of certificates of occupancy, but typically, and under the International Building Code, there's building permit and then there is occupancy and it's represented by issuance of a C of O or certificate of occupancy.
Any other comments regarding that? Any other comments regarding any other items within the development agreement? And we will be meeting again on Monday during council meeting to further deliberations of the PCI plan and also development agreement. Mayor Proton Mayhew?
Yeah, I'm curious what the council members or the mayor's point of view would be on. I think the, just to verify, the public has seen an early version of this proposed development agreement. Is that correct? Some time ago, we made that available to the public?
That's, that is correct. And I presented the draft development agreement in open session to the council in, in some detail. That was not the first draft that, that the council saw, but certainly an earlier draft. And I'm not recalling that date off the top of my head. I'm going to say it was in August.
So, the reason, I just want to make sure I was, had my facts right. My suggestion is that we have some form of summary. I don't know if it's something that's written, that's issued in advance, or if it's something more in the form of a presentation that's made on Monday. But I think, especially since the public, we're inviting the public to, to give comments. It seems like there is, my perspective is that there have been significant changes. The developer has proposed quite a few things that are, I think, very beneficial to the community. And I think it would be, you know, as a result of discussions with the council, but I think nonetheless, they're in the proposal now. And I think highlighting those things, certainly at least the major things, I think, would be very helpful to the public for them to realize what's happened since the last time they saw this document till now. Don't know if you all agree, but I, I think that's worth either giving in writing or, or even in presentation. I, I think the public would, would find that useful.
We could do both. You know, there's not a lot of time between now and what Team City Clerk will tell me is the drop dead time for getting the agenda packet published. But some of these, as you indicated, the major items could be summarized in the agenda bill. And then we can, with Mr. Rogers' assistance, we could do a tag team presentation and walk through all of the salient changes since the time that the last, the council last saw it.
Refer to me.
Just follow up. I think that sounds fantastic. And I would just encourage you, you know, given the time you have, you could do an extremely thorough job and run out of time. Or you could point them to sections and give them a sentence on what that is. They can read for themselves. So, then you would meet a timeliness and then you still have, still have them till Monday if you were to make, you know, a, a verbal, verbal summary that you have time to kind of find to what you might like to say. But I would say, don't make yourself crazy would be my point of view. Just show them where to look and tell them what to look for. And I think they can take it from there.
Right. And for readability, I think the the agenda bill would do better to be more of a bulleted list of the significant things. And as you indicated, page and section where readers can find that detail. And if we're, if we're able hypertext links, but if not, just, you know, page and section, and then we can explain them in more detail.
Council Johnson?
Yeah, I wanted to just a slight. Yeah, I wanted to just a slight bit of clarity on what the exact parameters are for public comment on Monday. Is it going to be the sort of thing we have? Before a normal bill where. Or or agenda bill where the public is allowed to comment and they can come up to the microphone or. Would there be more structure like in the form, not. Perhaps quite as detailed as a public hearing, but where you would have the developer and the primary opposition. Give their input. I just wanted to just understand what exactly. The expectation is for the people who want to give public comment on on Monday.
Do you want me to take that mayor?
I'd be fine with that they when they can do public comment as well. So which is your recommendation? Reproaching me.
Yeah, I I would suggest. That in the interest of, I would like to hear. Both from. Those who might make public comment. And particularly, I'd like to hear the developer be able to respond to those. I think that'd be very useful. So I think our normal public comment period. Limits people to three minutes. And so I I and I don't know if we could decide now or maybe we just decide on Monday.
It's three minutes, I believe it's three for that.
For agenda bill.
Oh, for a right. So but this I believe is in the public comment period, which I think then is three minutes, but. So maybe we need to clarify what we intend, but I I do just want to make the point. I I think we should have a longer period. Than that for the developer. And I don't know if we just do that as a motion on Monday or decide now, but I do think. How how I'll want to and I think that the public would appreciate hearing from the developer as well. So if. If a number of commenters made a number of comments. Being able to hear from the developer on that, having the time for that to happen, I think would be beneficial, not only for us, but for the public as well.
Pastor Wharton.
I believe having the. Public comment period in time is very important. But I do not want it to be an argument between public comment and then responded. By the applicant because really the the council is there to hear. The concerns of the citizens and anybody that wants to speak up. But the decision ultimately rests with us and it I I want to avoid. Any sort of dialogue. With the developer, I think, you know, that's part of our job. So I just wanted to be clear on that. And we definitely need to hear from the public before we make final decisions.
Customer saying.
Yeah, I have to say I agree with Councilmember Wharton. I think it's important to note that. This is comment period on the development agreement. This is not. Comment on your belief in the project. This is not comment on what you think should happen. This is not comment on what. You we you what should what should change. It's it's about the development agreement. And I think hearing from the public on the development green, which we have, we haven't had that opportunity to. And as the city attorney said, there have been conversations with the developer and I think that's been that's what's what we're, you know. What we're here for is to listen to the community during that time. And I think that's. Why I would also say, yeah, I would I would try to shy away from a back and forth sort of situation and just go with the public comment from the community on the development agreement.
Mayor Proton Mayhew.
Yeah, completely agree with that comment and thanks for that clarity. I my comment I. Would be absolutely opposed to a back and forth. I think that serves no one. All I meant was, or what I had in my head was the idea that we might hear. From members of the public and then at the conclusion of that, we might give some time for the greater than. Three minutes for the developer to then address some of those points and then that would be the end of it. That was my concept, not a back and forth. I think that would not be helpful to anyone.
And question, mayor for the council. We're talking about having the public comment perhaps up front and having the the longer. Time period if we are going to give a staff, a longer staff summary of the content. Do you wish to have public have that occur up before the public comment either at the beginning of the meeting or do you want to relocate the public comment? Or should have it occur with the agenda bill?
Reproaching me.
Yeah, my point of view on that is it's a fantastic question and I think. For this to be most effective, I think for the public to hear the staff presentation first. Just sort of directs everybody to what has changed, what what are the high points in there, I think then sets. The table, if you will, very well for then public comment to then follow. So I I'd be in favor of that.
So first we'll read in the agenda bill. And then staff presentation. And then public comments. So public comment, because it's after agenda bill. It's usually two minutes. Are we going to give three minutes? Are we going to do two minutes? Customer Halloween?
So back to one of the. The applicant opponent that is separate from the development agreement. And I do not want to have. Lean into impartiality between opponent and applicant. So. You sign the piece of paper, you get your amount of time. That's what we should do, period. Okay, applicant can sign and so can the opponent. Everybody signs. I would recommend just the weight of the subject that we do do three minutes and. Would motion that we do three minute periods on the public comment.
Mayor Proton Mayhew.
Yeah, so I I think that's a great point you're making, mayor. So. I think when we were when we discussed this at F and A committee. My reflection is we placed it under public comment, which in my mind meant it was subject to three minutes, but of course, you're absolutely right. That our policy is if a public comment is for items that are not on the agenda. So you're absolutely right. You would actually expect this to be following the reading of the agenda bill. Which would then result in two minutes. So I'm sort of following your, but yeah, I think you're absolutely right, but I I do agree with Councilmember Holloway. I think. In this case, giving him three minutes, I I we've all seen two minutes. It's it's tough. Three minutes, I think, is plenty. I'd like to see us give three minutes in this case.
I think the procedures also give discretion.
Yes, it. Customer saying.
In in case the procedures aren't clear, move to amend council rules and procedures to allow three minute comment. During the agenda bill for the development agreement.
Second.
Just moved by customer the sage second by customer Wharton to men raise the procedure to allow public comment to be three minutes. So he said. Any discussion? Customer Halloween.
I agree with the three minutes. I disagree with amend the procedure because then we ought to bring the procedure in here and do the whole thing on that. Can we just do a motion to have three minute public comments for this particular item next month?
I agree with that adjustment.
Okay. I move he seconds three minutes. Modify the motion to be three minutes for this item.
Yeah, remove the. Yeah, so amending the original motion is move to allow public comment period during on the development agreement. To have three minutes per per commenter.
I need to second.
Second by Council Holloway. So. Basically, we're him three minutes public comment. Say my customer Halloween. Any other any discussion? Reproaching Mayhew.
Move to additionally amend. The time allotted for this agenda bill. To allow at the conclusion of public comment for the developer to have a six minute. Comment period.
And does the applicant get the same or opposition? Was there a second?
Second. Does that include the opposition in that motion?
Sorry, Mary, you're correct. I got stuck in my throat. I meant to say. At the conclusion of public comment for the. Opposition, the primary opposition to have six minutes to comment and then. For the applicant to have. Six minutes a a comment at the end of the comment period then.
Was there a second on that one?
Second.
Okay. So conclusion of. Public comment, the opposition, and then the applicant would each have six minutes.
Customer Christian said, I just wanted to ask if the city would also like time at the end of public comment to address any. Issues as well of actual matters.
I I think we would probably like the option, but wouldn't need to guarantee it. So if there are. Items that we think have not been covered or questions raised that where we would want to point the council to things that we staff would. Appreciate the opportunity to do that. I'm sorry, speak closer.
In that case, move to amend the prior motion to include additional time for the city to respond.
Point of information, mayor. Is it not the case that? We can always ask for staff comment on any agenda bills, so we don't need to amend our procedures to allow for that to happen.
Right for clarification. So do we need? Disamendment?
I think you're waiting on a second.
Yeah, or it'll die, which is fine. Okay, motion that amendment dies from lack of a second. Okay, customer Halloween.
So I again, I. Disagree particularly as this is prior to our conclusion of quasi judicial activity. You are giving favoritism to the applicant. That runs a risk. This is an agenda bill of a development agreement separate from all the other activity. But you have to be aware not to show favoritism. So agenda bill, you take public comment. We said they can have three minutes. Again, you ought to be sign it. You get your three minutes. You're done. If we have questions to the applicants during when we go to deliberations on the on this. That's another matter, but for a public comment, you 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 gotta be just blanket with it, not. You know, we're gonna ask the applicant, we're gonna ask the opponent and we're redoing what we did for the overall. Development.
I believe she would Councilmember Christensen was talking about the mayor pro time questions to staff, not questions.
And that fit that didn't get a second. So that's that dinosaur died meteor hit. We're back to the surviving dinosaur, which was to give the opponent six minutes at the end of this. To respond to all the public comment before. And my caution is giving them that, giving them special consideration above me on the public. On this agenda bill is favoritism in reference to the overall development quasi judicial activity.
But we did have a primary opposition and then the then the applicant each had six minutes as part of the motion.
Guys, I still wouldn't do it. Fine. I if you want to do it, I'm no, I'm won't vote for it.
Okay, any other discussion on this? So we are winding all this up. So we are. First read in agenda bill, staff presentation, public comment, three minutes, conclusion. Primary opposition, we need to determine who that is. We get six minutes. And then applicant will get six minutes and then it is in cities. That's not part of the staff. So and then that is that's all the motion.
Point of order, mayor. I believe there's two separate motions on the table. There's one motion. The current motion is to allow six minutes of comment by the opposition and the applicant. And then the previous amendment to that is then the three minutes instead of two minutes. I believe we have to vote on the six minute. Motion first, then we'll go to that to the other one and then we can vote on then then it's.
Okay, so I read exactly what it would all look like together. So. So voting on the six minutes for the primary opposition and the applicant. All those in favor, say aye. Can you pose name? So I heard one name comes from the say and who's the other name? Customer Halloween. Right, so five. True, two. Propose. Can we move it on to the original was allowing the three minutes public comment. Following the first reading of the agenda bill and staff presentation and then three minutes. All those in favor, say aye. Can you oppose name? Okay, there's six to one opposition by customer Halloween. That all my dinosaurs. Rather than.
Me- meteor head avoided.
We need.
Mayor, can you summarize the 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 combined effect then of the?
Though it is first read in, we're first read in the agenda bill. Then staff presentation. And then we'll have public sign in. So we public comment for three minutes each. And then at the conclusion, we have primary opposition for six minutes and then applicant for six minutes. So this is only the development agreement. Following that, then we actually read in the agenda bill for the PCI plan. So. The development agreement, that's when you are going to make your comments and then you will vote. Following that and then PCI plan. That's when you'll deliberate and then vote. Reproaching me.
Yeah, ju- just so I'm clear, I am I correct that all of that will happen following the, I believe we have some. President, presentations, not the word I'm looking for. Yeah, yeah.
There's like all kinds of ceremonies.
So those things will happen. Yeah, okay. Thanks.
Lots of office. All kinds of stuff, it's exciting night. Any other customer Johnson?
Same question then for the PCI plan. Do we need to have a separate comment period for that? And would that follow a similar structure as to what we just discussed for?
No, because the PCI plan is considered as part of a closed record.
Oh, that's right. I remember that. Yes, thank you.
There would not be any additional comment allowed on that.
Right. Thank you for the reminder.
Okay, any other comments regarding the development agreement regarding Monday night's meeting? I'm not seeing any. Wow, good and early. All those in hearing no more discussion? All those, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, second. By Mayor Proton Mayhew, second by customer Wharton. Customer Vincent.
Actually, what?
All those in favor, say aye. Any pose name, right?
Hey, we.
Good job, everyone.